Members, please take your seats. Good morning, everyone. I note that the hour has come and that a quorum of this council is present. This council session will now come to order. Will all visitors please retire to your seats outside the rails? And before proceeding, I would ask all those present to please set your cell phones silent or vibrate, and please take all sidebar conversations outside of the council chambers. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Brian Jackson of Garden of Prayer World Prayer. He is here today as the guest of Councilmember and Minority Leader Brooks. I would ask all members and guests to please rise.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come to first say thank you for another day, for another opportunity, a day that we've never ever seen before. We ask right now that you would look on this great city, that you would bless all of the people that inhabit it, not only this city, but bless those that govern this city, that you may lead them and guide them in all truth. Help us to not lean to our own understanding, but in all of our ways to acknowledge you, that you may give us instruction and direction. If you do these things, Lord, we'll be careful to give your name glory, honor, and praise because it belongs to you. In Jesus' name we do pray, and all God's people say amen.
Amen. To Chair thanks the pastor for his invocation, council will now be at ease.
Good morning, Councilman.
The Chair notes, for the record, the presence of Councilmember Isaiah Thomas. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 31st, 2024. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 31st, 2024 be approved.
It has been moved and property seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 31st, 2024 stand approved. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The Chair thanks the Majority Leader. The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Brooks. The Chair recognizes Minority Whip O'Rourke. Thank you very much. The Chair now recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's council session.
Thank you, Council President. Prior to making the sunshine act motion, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege to welcome a home from Shauna Foundation to Philadelphia City Council today. We are joined by Cleopatra Robinson and Jessica Dixon-Ham. We welcome them to Philadelphia City Council. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved and property seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The Chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our city. We certainly invite you to come again. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I'd like you to join me in welcoming the students of Cassidy School in the Fourth District. It has been my privilege to watch them move from one of the second oldest school buildings, Kathy Gilmore Richardson, to one of the newest school buildings with a brand-new makerspace and brand-new weather station and opportunities to be educated in a first-class facility. Would students from Cassidy please rise? Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you, Member Jones. The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Would the Chief Clerk read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am hereby submitting for your consideration of your honorable body the following proposed ordinance: An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into various lease and sublease agreements with various landlords and tenants for the use by the city of all or a portion of various premises located at 1835 South Broad Street, 6,000 Woodland Avenue, 4029 Market Street, 5610 Lancaster Avenue, 2301 North Broad Street, 6420 Frankfurt Avenue, 2739 North Fifth Street, 5361 through 912 Avenue, 6233 North Broad Street, and 1619 Grant Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 320 North 41st Street and 323 North Holly Street, located in the Third Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code. And I am pleased to advise you that on November 13th, 2024, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on October 24th, 2024: Bill Number 240657, 240748, 240749, 240812, 240813, 240814, 240815, 240816, 240818, 240819, 240820, 240821, 240822, 240823, and 240824. And I am pleased to advise you that on November 13th, 2024, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on October 31st, 2024: Bill Number 240499, 240656, 240661, and 240662. There are no further communications in my possession, Council President.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the Journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Council President. I have one bill for introduction today.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Section 14-520 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Ninth District Overlay District by reorganizing existing requirements and requiring special exemptions for certain uses in designated areas, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Today I offer one privileged resolution and one bill, both on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Packer Avenue, Seventh Street, Patterson Avenue, and Darian Street, to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by adding Section 14-541 entitled Packer Avenue Overlay District and making other related changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the Philadelphia Tribune, an advocate and trailblazer for the African-American community on the occasion of its 140-year anniversary as the oldest continuously-published newspaper owned and operated by African-Americans.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gaultier.
Good morning, Council President. Today I have four non-privileged resolutions for introductions.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution, also naming the 3,900 block of Chestnut Street as Dr. Audrey E. Evans Way to honor the life and memory of Dr. Audrey E. Evans and her invaluable contributions to pediatric oncology and the Ronald McDonald House charities of the Philadelphia region.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 320 North 41st Street and 323 North Holly Street, located in the Third Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on today's... This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3924 Cambridge Street, 3909 Pens Grove Street, 1110, 1112, 1113, 1118, 1128 State Street, 3900, 3902, 3904, 3906, 3911, 3912, 3919, 3921, and 3926 Y Elusing Avenue, located in the Third Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the Third Councilmatic District, including on the following streets: North 35th Street, North 38th Street, Aspen Street, Brown Street, North DeKalb Street, Ogden Street, Sloan Street, and Union Street, pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm spending more time with y'all than my kids this week, but that's okay. I have one bill and one non-privileged resolution to introduce today.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the bill and resolution?
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to eliminate the requirement that city officers and employees resign from their city office or employment before becoming candidates for public office and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and to make arrangements for the special election.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to eliminate the requirement that city officers and employees resign from their city office or employment before becoming candidates for public office and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill and one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the bill and resolution?
An ordinance amending Chapter 9-600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses to add a new section, 9-640, entitled Mandatory Posting of Warning of Unlawful Transfer of Firearms to require licensed firearm dealers to post signs warning that purchasing firearms for another is criminally punishable, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Joint Committees on Public Safety and Parks and Recreation to hold hearings to examine the interdepartmental protocol administered by Philadelphia Parks and Recreation, the Philadelphia Fire Department, and the Office of Emergency Management for urban fire management in public parks and park-adjacent neighborhoods, considering the recent unprecedented droughts and wildfires across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ruland now.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing November 17th, 2024, as World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsey Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, everyone. Today I offer two bills, one on your behalf, and one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the bills and resolution?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into various lease and sublease agreements with various landlords and tenants for use by the city of all or a portion of various premises located at 1835 South Broad Street, 6,000 Woodland Avenue, 4029 Market Street, 5610 Lancaster Avenue, 2301 North Broad Street, 6420 Frankfurt Avenue, 2739 North Fifth Street, 5361 through 912 Avenue, 6233 North Broad Street, and 1619 Grant Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Oxford Street, Caldwell Lotter Street, Jefferson Street, Germantown Avenue, and Fourth Street.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution...
Council will be at ease.
And a privileged resolution declaring the third week of every November as Restorative Justice Week in the City of Philadelphia in honor of the International Campaign International Restorative Justice Week.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer four bills and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation or otherwise, in and to all portions of a certain parcel of land known as 923 West Butler Street, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Erie Avenue, Ninth Street, Hudsonson Street, Ontario Street, Sedgley Street, Sixth Street, Glenwood Avenue, and Broad Street.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1600 through 26 John F. Kennedy Boulevard, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 30 South 15th Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution thanking the Pennsylvania General Assembly for passing Act 103, the Putting the Brakes on Street Racing Bill.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Council President, I have one bill on your behalf today and proud to say co-sponsored by every member in this house, proving once again that we are for the working people of Philadelphia.
Thank you very much, Member Harity. Would a clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Philadelphia Code Section 17-107 to add stadium concession employees as a class of workers entitled to receive prevailing wages, as defined by the city code, from persons receiving city contracts or leasing land from the city or a city-related agency, adding and modifying definitions and establishing when such requirements are effective, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Minority Deputy Whip Nicholas O'Rourke.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Philadelphians all. I do have one urgent, non-privileged resolution to introduce on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the resolution?
A non-privileged resolution calling on Governor Josh Shapiro and the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to stave all fare hikes and service cuts to SEPTA by flexing federal infrastructure funds from state highway projects to local transportation authorities.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President. No resolutions or bills today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President, for one bill by request.
Thank you very much, Councilmember O'Neill. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan numbers 383, 384, 385, and 386 by relocating portions of the house lines and curb lines of Southampton Road from the Roosevelt Boulevard to points northwestwardly therefrom, relocating portions of the easterly house line and the curb lines of Southampton Byberry Road from the Roosevelt Boulevard to points southeastwardly and southwardly therefrom, and relocating portions of the curb lines of the Roosevelt Boulevard from Southampton and Southampton Byberry Roads to the Philadelphia Bucks County line, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills and one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolution?
An ordinance amending Section 14-500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending Section 14-502 entitled Center City Overlay District and 14-702 Floor Area Height and Dwelling Unit Density Bonuses and creating Section 14-542 entitled Philadelphia Chinatown Overlay District and making related changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code to create smart loading zones and camera-based enforcement systems for designated parking violations, revise the procedures for identifying and handling stolen vehicles prior to towing, amend the parking violations subject to towing, and make related technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the 300th anniversary of the Carpenter's Company of the city and county of Philadelphia, the nation's oldest trade guild, and stewards of the Carpenter's Hall.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions this week.
The Chair recognizes Dr. Nina Mott, Member...
Thank you, Council President. Today I have one bill.
Thank you very much. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising provisions for electric vehicle parking and electric supply requirements and making technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. There being no reports from committees today, the next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions for the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today: Numbers 241034, 241035, 240004, 240613-A, 240931. And the following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held: 240724, 240834, 240242, 240427, 240612, 240817, and 240304.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council sessions. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in an order in which your name appears on a sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commissioners each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit will be three minutes. In order to be fair to all those speaking to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the three-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium when there are 30 seconds remaining to your time. The light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once three minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not done so already. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Sorry, Council President, to interrupt you, but I was hoping to request a leave of absence as I have to attend to other council business, and I would like to go on the record as being recorded as I on all bills and resolutions on today's calendar.
As duly noted and leave is granted, thank you very much. I would now ask for the chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
May Antoinette Sanders make their way to the podium. May Zevi Coretz, Janine Murdock, and Benjamin Keys also make their way to the podium. Antoinette Sanders, Zevi Coretz, Jeanette Murdock, and Benjamin Keys.
Hi, my name is Zevi. I live in West Philadelphia, and I'm a proud member of Put People First PA. And I'm speaking on Councilwoman Brooks' resolution on a public healthcare advocate, or PHA. I'm a healthcare worker. I'm a therapist at an agency that sees people, mostly kids, on Medicaid. It's great that they have... on Medicaid. It's great that they have access to Medicaid, and something that's very clear to me is that what would most help these kids is living in a society that actually meets their basic needs. If their parents didn't have to work all the time, be stressed all the time, a lot of their pain, their behavioral challenges would go away. It's very obvious to me. So more than anything, my patients need an end to poverty, and we know that won't happen overnight, but it's something we need to fight for, and having a public healthcare advocate is a step in the right direction. In Put People First PA, we started organizing for a PHA in 2016 after winning town halls with the Pennsylvania Insurance Department. Through that, we learned that the regulators have very close relationships with the insurance companies, but there's actually nobody in government who actually represents us, the people who use and need healthcare, making sure that big healthcare decisions in society are actually benefiting us. There's nobody. And what we've seen over and over is that decisions are not benefiting us. Instead, decisions are being made that prioritize profits for healthcare profiteers, and these decisions are making us suffer and die needlessly. So just one example is hospital closures. Fifteen hospitals have closed in Pennsylvania in the past five years. It's a catastrophe. And just a couple blocks from my house in West Philly, a hospital shut down the intensive care unit because it wasn't making enough money. We might all know Honeman Hospital was bought and closed by someone who thought he could make more money flipping it as real estate, and this was all just allowed to happen because there's no one in government who has the power to say, "You can't do that," which is what a public healthcare advocate would do. And the PHA legislation is powerful because it's actually statewide. It would help people in Philly and in Delaware County, Scranton, Altoona, Johnstown. We talk and build with people in all these places, and wherever we go, people agree with us. Yes, the system is broken. We're hurting. We need care. We can't get it. And it's powerful in a time when so many issues are being used to divide and pit us against each other, that the need for healthcare unifies all of us. So through our struggle for a public healthcare advocate, poor and working-class people are coming together across all of our divisions to fight for what we need. So thank you for supporting it.
Jeanette Murdoch, hola. Good morning, everyone. I'm here to talk about my son, my youngest son. Who passed away October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two. He was sick. He went for insurance, and they denied him. He was on medication that he couldn't pay for. Please, disaster stop. Other people will die if they don't get insurance. People are sick and need insurance. Families, not just my son, but other families are being denied. I'm sorry. Not just my son, other families are being denied as well. We have to end this and fight back. Public healthcare advisors will be powerful, forces fighting against insurance companies, hospitals and others who put profit before people. After my son died, I had no one to turn to, no help. The PHA could have been a place I went to help for. I'm just asking. If anyone have children, and I know most people do, losing a child is horrible. Every day I wake up, and I want to call my son on the phone, but I can't because he's not there anymore. Please, for the sake of others, don't take away healthcare. We need this. Thank you.
My name is Anita Nicely, and I am speaking for Antoinette Saunders. Hi, my name is Antoinette Saunders, and I live in North Philly with my seven children. I'm speaking on Councilwoman Brooks' resolution on a public healthcare advocate. My experience with Medicaid has been a rocky road. My whole family has Medicaid. When you're pregnant, there are certain things insurance is supposed to do. All appointments are supposed to be covered, like the stress test, testing the compatibility of the fetus and the mother, and testing the fetus for any abnormalities. Dental is also supposed to be covered, but that was not my experience. I was hospitalized thrice during my pregnancy, with my doctors listing for unnecessary procedures, and I left. The third time, my daughter was born and had to stay in the NICU. I have periodontal disease, which can lead to death if untreated. When I went to the dentist, I was denied and had to pay out of pocket, which I can't do because I can't afford it. Even at the free clinics, they were doing cleanings, which is not going to treat the disease because Medicaid wouldn't cover all of the dental care I needed. With my oldest daughter, I've been fighting to keep her on medicine. The doctor sent in her prescription multiple times, and her insurance keeps denying it. This occurs at all of the different pharmacies that we go to. My youngest boy had to have surgery in his mouth. They fixed what they needed to fix, but a few weeks later, I got a letter from insurance telling me they wouldn't cover it. I filed an appeal, and I'm waiting for a response to that. I deal with a lot as it is, which causes my depression and my anxiety to raise, especially when it comes to my son. My periodontal disease is painful because it affects your gums, and if you eat or if it's too cold, there's pain. It's not something I can put on the back burner, and I try and treat myself before going to the doctors. I don't like that healthcare is a money-making industry, and the way to change that is to organize together. We need to make the voice of the people heard, so that is why I support a public healthcare advocate.
May Benjamin Keys, Kate Perez, Samaya Brown, and Jeremy Bladstein make their way to the podium. Benjamin Keys, Kate Perez, Samaya Brown, and Jeremy Bladstein.
Our federal conventional arms transfer policy states that we cannot sell if there is a chance that our weapons will be used in crimes against humanity. My name is Kate Perez. Seven hours ago, Israel bombed the Jabalya Refugee Camp in Palestine and a suburb in Lebanon. Three hours ago, the occupation bombed an entire residential block in North Gaza, and one hour ago, they struck the Sala Eden School northwest of Gaza City. Companies that sell to the occupation are not conforming to the law, meaning that Ghost Robotics in the council president's district is breaking federal law by continuing to supply AI-enabled robot dogs that are currently on the ground in Gaza. Augusta Westland Philadelphia Corp., also known as Leonardo, under Councilmember O'Neill, is breaking federal law by continuing to supply naval munitions and attack helicopters to the illegal occupation. Day &amp; Zimmerman, under Councilmember Young, is the primary supplier of Israel's three most-used munitions. Councilmember Young, are you aware that Day &amp; Zimmerman in your district supplies the tank shells that the occupation fires into refugee camps? For over four hundred days, this city council and mayor have sat back, refusing to add their legislative powers to stop the weapons from leaving our ports. You all know that Israel murders one child every four minutes. Our council should be pressuring Congress to support Bernie Sanders' Joint Resolutions of Disapproval one 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 to one sixteen. That would stop the twenty billion dollars in arms sales to Israel. I encourage everyone in this room to call your representatives to stop the arms sales to a state that will continue to indiscriminately bomb Palestine, Lebanon, Syria, Yemen, and Iran. Blinken refused to impose the arms embargo but congratulates polio clinics in Gaza, ignoring that polio is back in the Gaza Strip for the first time in twenty-five years, and was only brought back because Israel has been destroying any water filtration and sanitation systems, overturning graves with bulldozers to help spread disease, systematically targeting the medical systems and abducting medical personnel. He also admitted that Israel dropped US-made bombs on a polio clinic where children were receiving their vaccines. One victim shared, "My baby nephew, my friend's baby's nephew, who was scheduled for a vaccination today, is now internally bleeding from shrapnel in his spine and lungs. It's the same lie and mockery by Israel." I don't understand why our city council members and our mayor just stay silent as these weapons leave our ports.
Jeremy Bladstein, may Leo Vicaro, Ms. Joy Taney, and Tyrese Glasgow also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, City Council. City Council President. My name is Jeremy Bladstein. All right, since all of a sudden this week, City Council wants to finally talk about CEPTA, raise your hand if you rode CEPTA to City Hall this morning. I rode it from Fifty-Ninth and Drexel this morning, took the G bus, got on the Market Frankfurt line. Took me about forty minutes, but I encourage each-- and for those of you at home--
Mr. Bladstein, are you talking about the land bank or a resolution regarding CEPTA?
Oh, I'm getting there, sir. I'm talking about bill number two four one zero three four, which will move land from the Philadelphia Land Bank. Two weeks ago, there was a hearing on the land bank. Land that is-- deals that are approved by the land bank board then get sent over to City Council. There are deals that are being held by City Council members right now, and they are not passing them. That doesn't make any sense. Deals that pass the land bank board should get moved forward and not be held up by the City Council member, right? What's the point of putting something out there when the work's not even done? Philadelphia is a city with enormous potential, and growing our population to two million is a bold achievable vision that benefits everyone. Why does this matter? First, a large population strengthens our economy. More residents mean a bigger tax base, which funds better schools, safer streets, and improved public services without increasing individual tax burdens. Second, it attracts businesses and creates jobs by expanding our talent pool. It also revitalizes neighborhoods, spurring housing development and boosting property values. Third, a large, more diverse population enhances Philadelphia's cultural vibrancy, making it a global destination for arts and cuisine and innovation. Finally, growth strengthens our city's influence. With two million residents, Philadelphia gains more leverage at the state and federal levels to secure funding and drive policy that works for us all. This isn't just about numbers. It's about making Philly stronger, fairer, and more livable for all. Let's grow Philly to two-milli. It's really important right now, as we've heard this week, to not waste time on things that aren't going to grow the city of Philadelphia. We can't be a city of no. We have to invest in the city. Private dollars coming into the city of Philadelphia is a good thing. Building more affordable housing is a good thing, and I really just would encourage us to have the goal in mind of grow Philly to two-milli. And I will also put this out there to end it is, the invitation is out there for all of you to ride CEPTA with me. I know Councilman Jones will do that next time, and Councilman Harity will go from KNA, but it's really a shame if each and every one of you don't feel safe or willing to ride CEPTA. You don't ride CEPTA Thursdays. All I'm saying is ride on Thursdays. It's a challenge. So thank you, and grow Philly to two-milli.
Hello, my name is Leo Vicaro. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of Bill two four zero nine three one. I'm grateful for the support of Council President Johnson, Councilmember Young, and Councilmember Jones. As a high school history teacher who has to head back to his class at noon and a passionate advocate for Philadelphia history, I'm thrilled that Carolyn LaCount will be honored in our city. Historians like Fasaha Trailer, Dan Biddle, Murray Dubin, and Judy Geisberg have long championed her incredible story. However, until now, Carolyn LaCount's historic actions and dedicated service have remained largely unknown to the broader public. By dedicating a street in her honor, we can inspire Philadelphians and ensure that one of our city's greatest heroes is never forgotten. In our historic city, of course, we have a rich tradition of honoring brave men, emphasis on men. We should be proud of our government that was brought forth here and was dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal, but we should also celebrate the women and their contributions to the progress of our nation. Just seven years ago, we dedicated a statue of Octavius Cato outside of this building, a testament to his sacrifice for equality. Today, many Philadelphians know Cato's story and are inspired by his courage. Now we have the opportunity to honor the woman who loved and mourned him, Carolyn LaCount. Though she wasn't martyred like Cato, she faced the same dangers when she integrated our public transit, March twenty-fifth, eighteen sixty-seven, at Eleventh and Lombard. At just twenty-one years old, she worked fearlessly to bring justice to our nation, knowing the risks. Carolyn LaCount continued her work as an educator and advocate, embodying the American ideal of egalitarianism, even in the face of adversity. Yet, for a century, her grave remained unmarked, and her contributions were largely forgotten. Out of our city's fifteen hundred statues and monuments, only four depict real women. By honoring LaCount, we are not only recognizing her bravery, but also acknowledging the vital role women have played in shaping our city's history. Let us ensure that future generations know the story of Carolyn LaCount, a true Philadelphia hero. After the bill is passed, our work is far from done. The teachers and historians of Philadelphia will continue to educate the public about our noble history and the past struggles that forged a better nation, and we hope to have council and government's participation in those efforts. Thank you.
Ms. Joy Taney, Tyreek Glasgow, and may Raquel Fetzer and Carmen Hagan also make their way to the podium.
My name is Joy Tawney, and I am a member of the Tawney family, whose ancestors include Chief Justice Roger Tawney, after whom Taney Street was named. I'm here to speak on Bill two four zero nine three one. My father, Peter Tawney, is in the chamber with us today, and you will hear his comments on renaming Taney Street to LaCount Street later. The Tawney family has debated how to reckon with our family's legacy and infamous ancestor for longer than I've been alive. The conversation has gone on for longer than my father and his siblings, who lived in Philadelphia since the seventies, have been alive. When my Tawney uncle worked with the Scott family to create an official apology from the Tawney family to the Scott family on the one hundred sixtieth anniversary of the ruling, he said, "Apologizing to the Scots for the Dread Scott decision is like bringing a Band-Aid to an amputation." It's right and necessary to apologize, but what's important now is what actions we can all take. The actions we can take in Philadelphia by changing the name of Taney Street to LaCount Street can turn the tides on the psychological and social impact that this street name has caused in Philadelphians of all races for one hundred sixty-six years. Taney Street was named just one year after the Dread Scott decision was issued. Roger Tawney has no significant history here. He didn't live here, and my Tawney cousin's research revealed zero significant connections or moments in his life which happened in Philadelphia. Many Philly street names connect to Philadelphian history and meaning, from our local trees to Shaka Maxon's Lanape translation of a place where chiefs meet. But Roger Tawney is associated with this one act. It is the only way we hear the Tawney name mentioned at all in school or in conversation when learning about significant Supreme Court rulings and the long, ongoing road towards civil rights justice. Can you imagine that day for a Philadelphian student discussing the horrific cultural impact of Tawney's ruling against the citizenship and personhood of Black Americans and seeing that name on your own home street? I can't even begin to imagine how Taney Street must make our Black Philadelphians feel. As a Tawney family member, I feel shame when seeing the street and a deep distrust toward a mayor who wanted to honor Tawney's part in the Dread Scott decision this way. What must naming Taney Street and leaving it standing for one hundred sixty-six years say to Philadelphians about a city government which honors one of the great American dehumanizers? Renaming Taney Street won't solve the vast and terrible legacy of my ancestors' ruling that Black people who were slaves or had ancestors that were slaves did not have rights as American citizens. But renaming it to LaCount Street can be a transformative act. But renaming it to Lecount Street can be a transformative act. Caroline Lecount wasn't just a Black Philadelphian activist who was ahead of her time in desegregating transportation ninety years before Rosa Parks, her public speaking accomplishments, and becoming the second Black woman school principal in Philly history. She is still an example and inspiration for modern activists to follow in making our city better. Learning Lecount's name in school or in conversation and connecting it to your nearby street or your home street is aspirational. By sticking to and fighting for what she believed in, Caroline Lecount made history. The city government honoring Lecount Street shows that you believe in what she believed in, rather than Tawney Street reminding Philadelphians how Black Philadelphians were not property so long ago, and the government supported that too through Tawney. Your position, uh, sorry, the Dread Scott decision is proof that in America, what is legal and what is right are two different entities. Your position as government leaders will continue to challenge or choose the disenfranchisement and displacement of your citizens in this and future decisions, such as whether to build the Sixers Arena and its powerful opposition by Philadelphian citizenry. The Tawneys who live in this city now and the Tawneys who have lived here since the seventies believe in Lecount Street. Thank you.
Tyree Glasgow, Raquel Fetzer, Carmen Pagan, Luis Soto, and Ramon Cruz.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tyree Glasgow. I'm the Executive Director of Young Chances Foundation, which is a community-based organization in South Philadelphia. Our focus is public health, public safety, and youth development. I'm here to give testimony and support of the renaming of Taney Street to Lecount Street and make our public testimony and support against any decision or quality of life measure that affects all of our communities. In this ruling, the US Supreme Court stated that enslaved people were not citizens of the United States, and therefore could not expect any protection from the federal government or the courts. Their opinion also stated that Congress had no authority to abandon slavery from federal territory. I want to first define the testimony from our community organization for over the past twelve years. Our service, we have provided fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty-three household with services, had forty-two impact events, and served twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-seven youths. This is our organizational testimony and service to our community, city, and country. As a leader, man, and father in the city of Philadelphia, I'm here to say that that is who we really are. We are a fabric of our community. And someone who was raised by his mother and grandmother, who didn't let the lack of resources or adequate healthcare, quality education, and a chance to own a home, but gave me a vision for tomorrow, in a hustle, and to trust in the Lord with all my heart, and lean not on my own understanding, and in all my ways acknowledge Him. This is why our numbers are not numbers, they're people. The people can tell the same story of a troubled past and challenges of today by not having confidence to speak of a hopeful tomorrow. Caroline Lecount gives us that opportunity to speak of that importance of education for every child, because we know that a smart child provides a safe community for all of us. The conversation can start on how young women can become whatever they want in this city, become a principal, and have a street name after them. I will close by saying that this is not about yesterday, it's about our tomorrow, and we have an opportunity to change how our next generation of leaders and youth feel about being equal in our city. Because the work is not going to stop for us, for our organization. We're going to continue to push the coloring books, have listening sessions in our communities, and hopefully get some CEPTA rides with Caroline Lecount on the side of the bus, because she is our Philadelphia Rosa Parks. I want to thank our council people for bringing this bill to the table, and also our council president for doing the work behind the scenes. And I gave a testimony earlier in our close about Mr. Albert Noble, who was the architect of death who invented dynamite, and he did all of those things and made a lot of wealth through that. But that decision, that decision for him to make money contributed to his obituary being put out, and they talked about him being the worst person in the world and how it killed children. What Albert Noble did was he went around the country, and he went to his council people, all right, he went to his council people, his people who really believed in tomorrow, and he asked them to go find good people in our community, in cities, and country who are providing that good work. And now that award is called the Nobel Peace Prize. So I appreciate our council for stepping up and doing the same thing and changing the images of what our community and youth will see. Thank you.
Mr. Glasgow, we just want to thank you for your leadership in bringing this initiative to my office, and I publicly acknowledge Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young and Councilmember Curtis Jones for being willing partners in bringing this to fruition as we right a wrong in the history of the city of Philadelphia. So thank you for your leadership and your organization. Thank you very much.
Carmen Pagan, Luis Soto, Ramon Cruz, and Peter Tawney.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Raquel Fetzer McNichols. So I started this journey as a convicted felon, an addict, an alcoholic, a menace to society, someone who was very much part of the problem in Kensington, Fishtown, and Port Richmond. Today, eight and a half years later, still a convicted felon, but we're working on that. I am a recovered alcoholic, recovered addict, a mother, a wife, a employee, an honest employee, right? And I'm also someone who has contributed many solutions, been part of many solutions for this city. And I really, I really appreciate that I am someone today that, you know, gives back to my community in such tremendous ways. Before, people would have never called me, parents would have never called me and asked, "How can you help my daughter? How can you help my son?" And today, I've had some of those private conversations where we just walk by each other and we wave, and we, only we know, right? And I, and I get to be a daughter today. My mother turned me in to the police when I committed the crime that I committed, she turned me in to the FBI. And last year, she walked me down the aisle and gave me away to my husband, right? So I'm here to say, I really believe in restorative justice. I am certainly living proof. When I was incarcerated on State Road, I was there for six months, and then I was paroled to the FER program. Judge Scott DeClaudio said, "I'm giving you one chance, and if you mess this up, you're going up the muncie." And I, listen, I am someone that cannot jail, I've realized that, but I, I took that into consideration, and I had gotten sober already in, behind the walls through the Twelve Step Fellowship. And I continue that journey today in that fellowship and, but most of all, so when I got out of there, I went to FER, and I was paroled to treatment. I've always been a Medicaid, I was always a Medicaid recipient. And once I got there, I was like, I gotta do something different. So I became a certified recovery specialist right afterwards, was, I got off probation. I think it was two years early, right, due to good behavior and my contributions. And I, I'm very proud to say that I've connected hundreds of people to treatment and recovery today. I believe I'm a voice for those who don't have voices, and I am definitely like a unicorn in some ways, right? Because people don't always like agree with me, I'm a little old school, but that's okay, because this is like my experience and like what worked for me. Today, I am also pursuing my bachelor's degree in psychology and applying to grad schools, which is wild. Thank you. And yeah, I just want to say I'm really grateful. I believe in restorative justice, and you know, it's all about the full circle. Thank you for all that you do.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, City Council. My name is Carmen Pagan, and I am going to be speaking in regards to Councilwoman Kessala Salas' resolution for declaring the weak of restorative justice. I myself am a convicted felon. I ended up doing five years in state prison. You know, I was part of the problem out in the community, and I'm so glad that upon getting discharged, you know, from prison, I changed my life around, I went and got my associates, my bachelors, and everything that I gave out to the community, all the bad that I did, I feel as though today I'm out there helping, doing different things. Honestly, humbled and honored to be here, to share part of my story, because it's hard. It's hard getting out of prison and trying to reintegrate back into the community when there's a time where I came out in 2007, and there was not many supports, as we have a lot of supports nowadays, but back then, it was I came home and they sent me to the welfare office, and I didn't know what to do after that. They didn't know what to do with me. So I had to fight. There were days that I went to interviews and cried because of my criminal background. I couldn't get a job, but you know what? I took accountability, and I said, "Carmen's not going to go out there to sell drugs, she's not going to go out there to get high," you know, and here I am with the support of my colleagues and, and just God, you know, I, I give it all to God and just to my community. I'm happy to be able to be that mentor, right? So that people could look and they say, "You know, Carmen did it, who would have thought Carmen could do it?" And here I am, you know, so it just goes to show you, this means a lot to me, you know, and I'm glad that we have all these different programs backing up people, because we do recover, you know, and we can become productive citizens of society, because here I am as a witness, you know, so thank you, everyone, appreciate you guys.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Luis Soto. First of all, I want to say, I want to thank God, my high power, for, you know, for today, for this moment, and everybody in here, you know, so very nervous, but you know, over twenty years, I was an addition here in Philadelphia. I was part of the problem for many years. Almost four years homeless, eleven years of state prison. Today, I thank God, because we almost fourteen years clean, you know, doing the right thing for the right reason. I firmly believe that God has a plan for me and a purpose in my life, and He started to complete it, you know, now I can see it. So because today I work for the Office of Public Safety, under the Office of Criminal Justice, I'm part of the PA program, Police Assistant Program, and he goes, asks me or told me that I go be working out of the District of Police, 24, 25th District Police, I go look at you like you crazy, because my record, you know, another stuff, my time in jail, stuff like that, my crimes, you know, that I commit, stuff like that. But for God, nothing is impossible, you know, and today I can say that I live, I do my best to live a clean life, not a perfect life, but to the right thing for the right reason, to face my challenge, my problems, you know, and not run from them to the, to the street. You know, today I can say also that I help others that are struggling with the same thing that I struggled before, you know, for many years, you know, especially, you know, those that are incarcerated right now, and, you know, and coming out to the community. Because they, I used to be then, coming out without hope and thinking about that nobody go give me an opportunity to have a job, you know, a legal job. So, and that's, that's something that is not true, and, and I'm, you know, living there right now, you know, for some years. So I want to say real quick that my son is going through the same thing that I went through, you know. Right now, he's sitting down in a county jail, and I just want to be a hope for him that he adapted, and know that he can do it, and live a better life, you know, when he coming out. So I just want to thank everybody, all the council members, you know, for this, and for the, Ramon Cruz, thank you, you know, my good friend, you know, for this invitation, on Councilwoman, let's call her Kessala, for the invitation, and let's do it, let's work for the community and help our community to be better. Thank you.
My name is Ramon Cruz. Thank you, good morning, and I'm honored here, and good morning, council members. After spending twenty-six-plus years incarcerated, in and out of incarceration, restorative justice involves engaging those who caused harm, the victims, and the affected families and communities in processes aimed at repairing damage and rebuilding relationships. My own journey of restorative justice evolved through reconciliation and reparation with my family, the victims of my past actions. In September of 2015, my life underwent a significant transformation when I see, when I was released from prison, motivated by the desire to change primarily for the sake of my mother and children. I took responsibilities for my actions and sought to contribute positively to a community that has suffered due to my criminal behaviors. Despite facing numerous challenges during my reintegration into society, including supervision, which was life supervision, and my extensive criminal record, I remain steadfast in my commitment to change. Tragically, the very motivations for my transformation have become sources of deep sorrow. In just nineteen, I lost my son two years ago to the struggles I had tirelessly advocated against, and just nineteen days ago, my mother passed away. Nevertheless, my dedication to accountability and personal growth has allowed my family to cherish the present and aspire to a brighter future. Nine years ago, I presented with the chance to convert my past liabilities into assets, leading me to work at DBHIDS, where I utilized my lived experience to assist individuals facing homelessness and behavioral health challenges. Following a series of promotions, I successfully established council district behavioral health teams called Community Wellness Engagement Unit, which operates within the community to provide resources aimed to enhancing wellness. However, after the tragic loss of my son two years ago, I found myself unable to continue this work. Although my commitment to supporting communities remains strong, albeit in a different capacity. Currently, I serve as the Director of Quality of Life and Community for ASE, where I empower community leaders through the Liveability Academy. This initiative equips residents with the skills to draft proposals, to contribute to opportunities, and receive by speaking at various venues. Following my life supervision, I appeared, and now I do not have life supervision. Thank you.
May Peter Taney, Rosalyn Wuchowicz, Fred Motley, Samantha Spector, Major Hodges, Tiffany Davis, and Nia Wise also make their way to the podium.
My name is Peter Tawney. I thank the council for the opportunity to speak on the bill to rename Taney Street to Lecount Street. Roger Brooke Tawney was my great, 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 great uncle, and his actions have cast a shadow over my life. I'm seventy-five years old, and I'm still living with this, and it's affected the decisions I've made all my life in what I do for a living, how I live my life, and how I treat other people. So I heartily applaud the efforts to rename this street, and I could say that in my extended family, I'm one of eight siblings, and in my extended family, I think my sentiments are shared by everybody with the last name of Tawney right now, and it's, this guy shouldn't be dog catcher, I'm sorry, you know, it's, you know, I, this is great, guys, I love what you're doing, I hope it passes, I hope you can name it, and the fact that they're renaming it for a woman who is so active in civil rights in Philadelphia, I think is a, is a, is a great, you know, really good move. Thanks, guys.
Good morning. My name is Rosalyn Wuchenek. I'm the president of Unite Here Local 274. I'm here this morning in, in support of the amendment to Section 17107 of the prevailing wage ordinance to make sure that it applies to stadium concession workers. to make sure that it applies to stadiums, stadium concession workers. Our members in our, in Unite Here Local 274 work in food service at the airport, at the stadiums in Center City, and are also the hotel workers who welcome guests to our city. As many of us know here, service workers are overwhelmingly women and people of color. And it's our opinion in our union that our jobs are not paid what they should be in large part because of that fact. Those jobs are also, service jobs are the biggest number of jobs in our city. So when we do not use everything in our power to increase compensation and benefits for these jobs, we are literally impoverishing our city. In South Philadelphia at the stadium complex, over 2,700 people clocked in for work in 2023. And as the city is considering a new arena proposal, we need to look at the hundreds of jobs that people would be clocking into doing food service and retail work if that arena is approved. Honestly, as a union, we are not interested in hearing about just creating jobs. Our members have two, three, four, even five jobs. When we hear about Philadelphia being the poorest big city in this country, we know that most people living in poverty have jobs that do not pay enough. So when we're looking at jobs being created, the questions have to be, what are the nature of those jobs? Will these jobs further impoverish our city while owners reap profits? Or are they going to lift all of us up? Are they going to lift up the communities that need it the most? These jobs, these stadium jobs are all on city-owned land. At the airport and on city construction projects, this body has in fact taken action that we deeply appreciate to make sure that the city uses its power as a landholder and as a contractor to set minimum wage and benefit requirements. And in fact, in 2016, this body revised that law to include stadium workers in building services only. But it did not include food service and retail. Stadium food service and retail workers should be no exception. This law would provide at least a $20 minimum wage and hourly healthcare and benefit contributions for all these workers. Our city and these Philadelphia residents and our communities deserve nothing less. We want to thank the council president, Kenyatta Johnson, council member Jim Harity, and all of the co-sponsors of this bill. We ask every member of city council for your support. Thank you.
Good morning, one and all. My name is Fred Motley. I'm a lifelong resident of Philadelphia. I currently reside in North Philly right now. I also work, for the last 10 years, down in the South Philly, working through the three buildings of the complex, the sports complex. I stand before you, currently dealing with an umbilical hernia in front of me, as well as having to take care of my now 17-year-old son. In 2009, when he was one and a half, he had an aneurysm and a stroke. I had to pay for additional therapy for him because my healthcare package was poor, out of my pocket. I would like to be able to upgrade my status and better be able to take care of him. I humbly ask for support of this bill. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Samantha Spector. I live in the Frankfurt section of Philadelphia. I worked for the stadium food service for nine years. As you can see, I'm working Eagles game tonight. I'm in my uniform. I'm here because right now I don't have healthcare. Working in stadiums is not a nine-to-five job where you get 40 hours a week. It's unpredictable hours and you have to be, you have to be available at all times. We work when there are events only. If the team goes to playoffs, we have to be available. But on the flip side of all that, it's unpredictable and in regular hours. I don't have healthcare right now because I can't afford it. I'm a single mom. I spend $300 a month on my 17-year-old daughter to make sure she has healthcare. And that's about it because I can't afford to pay both. I can't afford to refill my prescription right now. I can't get a mammogram. I can't go to a doctor to make sure I'm healthy. I'm afraid it's impossible for me to stay healthy. This bill would have a huge impact on my life because I would be able to have access to healthcare. The city did this for the airport and it's long overdue for the stadium workers. We thank you so much for your support.
Hello, how y'all doing? My name is Mija Hodges. I'm a cook at the Wells Fargo Center. I'm a prep cook. If you ever ate down Wells Fargo, ate anything down there, I'm probably the person that, I'm probably the person that cooked it for you. If you ever ate down Wells Fargo, I'm probably the person that cooked it for you. I make $17 an hour. It's not enough money to take care of my family. Not even enough money to take care of me. I would like y'all to support this bill. So we will be here to take our family, me and my coworkers. I appreciate y'all. Thank y'all very much.
Good morning. My name is Nia Wise. I work at the Wells Fargo Center as a stand manager in the Lincoln Financial Field as a stand attendant. And this is my third season at the stadium complex. As event-based workers, it's very hard to plan our income on a monthly basis. It fluctuates a lot. It's also hard for me to retain my government benefits because of how much the pay changes week to week. It's even harder when you're not in all three of the complexes. Right now, I'm fighting to get insurance coverage and don't have any coverage while I'm expecting my first child. I'm worried about affording the healthcare that I need while I'm pregnant. And this bill would allow me to be more financially stable month to month and help me afford the healthcare and benefits that I would need for me and my family. Thank you for your support.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Tiffany Davis. I am here to support the bill to include a wage standard for stadium workers. I am currently resigned in the Philadelphia section of Alany. I am 32 years of age. I work at all three stadiums and I also have two extra jobs besides that. I currently take care of my uncle, who currently has bone cancer. I am the sole provider for him. And it's very hard to take care of him and work and also manage my own life. I am, I am, I'm sorry. Yes, through all these jobs, I really can't take care of myself. I really have like a hard time of managing everything. And I am, in these last couple of days that, I want to be really honest with y'all, these last couple of days, I've been sitting here in these, in these hearings, and y'all prevailing this new stadium is like, is like crazy to me because I like, we're, we're stadium workers and I haven't heard anything about that. And why would we build something that we're, we're creating these jobs where these other jobs are not even good? Like, I just feel like, I just feel like we creating jobs that are not good. And why are we not focused on making these jobs better and then bringing in these other jobs? Why are we creating more bad jobs? And I, and I thank you for hearing me out. I want to, I want to thank council president, Council Kenyatta Johnson, and council member Jim Harity, and all the sponsors for introducing this legislation. Thank you.
May Jenny Zhang, Amelia Weber, Emily Goddard, and Lynn Landis make their way to the podium. Jenny Zhang, Amelia Weber, Emily Goddard, and Lynn Landis.
Good morning. I'm Jenny Zhang, and I'm speaking on Resolution 241035. Advocating for people's health is essential, and that's why I'm so concerned that this week's hearings proved that the proposed Sixers Arena is a bad deal for Philadelphia and threatens the economic health and vitality of our city and of Chinatown in particular. Chinatown relies on Jefferson University for our healthcare needs. Already, Philadelphia's emergency response times are three minutes longer than the industry standard. Do you think that an arena in an area surrounded by residents whose only access to a major hospital that lies within the arena's boundaries and borders are going to see those times improve? As a Chinatown resident, I've been appalled at how the testimony this week showed how much the administration and the Sixers ignored and dismissed reasonable and rational concerns. I want to clarify just how much the Parker administration has failed to responsibly engage with Chinatown community and other impacted neighborhoods. Not once did the mayor come directly to Chinatown. There was only one meeting with staff members in the spring of this year. All meetings with the city were cut off by the summer. The impact studies were completed in December 2023, but Chinatown never saw a single study until nine months later in September 2024, after which not only did the mayor announce her support, she announced that she had unilaterally negotiated a pathetic public benefits agreement, community benefits agreement, that effectively cut out Chinatown from any remediation of concerns. Did you not just see the last election? That election said loud and clear, this city hall does not speak to, for, or about its people. 88% of Philadelphians do not believe a Sixers Arena is a priority for the city. But here you are, rolling out the red carpet for billionaires who scoffed at your questions about serious issues like housing, schools, workers, diversity, and neighborhoods, about us. When asked whether they could even consider giving us more, the answer was no. So, in the words of Councilmember Thomas, there is nothing more to talk about. Watching our city council speed this process through, terrified of billionaires who will never live in our neighborhoods, never send their kids to our schools, never understand the lives of immigrants and working people other than the ones they pay, made me sick to my stomach. I believe in a better Philadelphia. I believe this council needs to stand up and fight for us, the people. If the mayor's office will not slow down this process and give Chinatown and the people of this city a chance to demand the things we know we deserve, and to demand it from people who can afford to do so much more than what is being asked of them right now. Give us a chance to thrive and give Philly a chance to rise. Slow this process down.
Hi, good morning. My name is Emily Goddard, and I'm speaking on Resolution 241035. From my perspective as a West Philly, West Philly resident, and with a master's degree in public health, I support establishing a public healthcare advocate office to prioritize public health and well-being, specifically as we face public health threats from the proposed Sixers Arena. My specialty is around climate change and health and how the climate impacts our health. The construction sector is the largest emitter of greenhouse gases, accounting for 37% of global emissions. We, as we know, we're in a growing climate crisis, leading to increasing severe weather events such as the current drought that we're in. The 76ers already have a perfectly good arena in South Philly. And yet, as we saw in this week's hearings, the owners of the Sixers don't think that's enough. They don't think it's enough that they get hundreds of millions of dollars in tax breaks while our rents and property taxes rise. And they don't think it's enough that they're trying to weasel their way into a brand-new taxpayer-supported arena while our public schools, or our public school bathrooms flood and roofs leak on a generation of children. When they were asked this week about whether they were going to give any more than what they had promised two years ago, they said no. But we need city council to say yes to the people of this city, to say yes to real investments in housing and environmental justice, to say yes to holding building trades accountable for a diversified workforce, and serious remediations to the harms of their industry. But all I've heard from the Sixers Arena, or the Sixers and the administration, is no. No when Councilmember Gautier said that $3 million over 30 years is not enough to support affordable housing in a gentrifying community. No when Councilmember Gilmore Richardson asked the Sixers if the arena is supposed to be such a boon for people of color, women, and local businesses. Why are none reflected in the ownership of this project? And no when Councilmember Thomas asked if they can do more. The city is in crisis. Please stop the timeline, this ridiculous timeline. Making decisions in 30 days that I and my neighbors will have to live with for 30 years is ridiculous. We need a city office that protects us, the people, not the billionaires, from the public health threats of the arena. That's a bad deal for everyone. Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Amelia Weber, and I'm offering comment in support of councilmembers Brook, Brooks' bill establishing an office of the public healthcare advocate. I have a degree from the Public Health School at the University of Maryland, and I'm a current resident of District Five. I want to thank Councilmember Young and others on council for asking tough questions in this week's hearings on the Sixers Arena. He asked how this city can explain why it's doing backwards flips and hurdles for the greed of a handful of billionaires who don't fight for us. Josh Harris doesn't care if the Birds win or lose tonight because he owns the opponent too. Councilmember Bass put it very plainly, those billionaires couldn't be bothered to show up here to face you, to answer your questions, to stand by the project they are forcing down our throats. That's how little the Sixers owners thinks of the people of Philadelphia, including the members of city council. They are watching you postpone important issues in the city: school closings, skyrocketing housing and rent costs, a potential strike by municipal workers, and our public transit system falling apart. Also, you can do this mad rush for billionaires who are telling everyone they already know the outcome. They already, they think they know your votes already. I'm sickened by the election results last week, but I don't think you understand how angry people are that the people we elect are thinking about a taxpayer-supported arena for billionaires and not about the things which impact our lives, our future, our city. Councilmember Young called it a slap in our face, and he's right. Stand up for our city and our people. Slow down this process and demand more for Philadelphia. I urge council to consider the public health impacts and unanswered questions regarding the arena plan, something a public healthcare advocate would do. For two full days, all we've heard about the, from the mayor's office and the Sixers is that the arena deal is frozen. The Sixers won't cough up another dime. More 50, a $50 million community benefits agreement is a slap in the face negotiated in secret without any of these council members in the process. Imagine the arrogance. Any public health advocate would have concerns with this plan and a lot of questions about how to mitigate health impacts caused by seven years of construction and unchecked development, while the testimony so far has shown no answers to questions about SEPTA. And you all are smart enough to know that public transit impacts public health. Thank you.
Can we have Lynn Landis, then Wanda Walker, Muti Ajanit Asagbaro, sorry if I mispronounced that, and Obonahagans also make their way to the podium?
I'm Lynn Landis of SafeStreetsPhilly.org. I support Resolution 240724, which asks for, and I quote, "the unyielding resolve," unquote, of state enforcement of laws against the sale of liquor at corner store establishments pretending to be restaurants. Yet where is the unyielding resolve of this body to enforce our own local laws? At this week's hearings about the proposed 76ers Arena, which I support, it was pointed out that the public needs reassurances that it will be a safe space. But why isn't that area and other parts of Philadelphia safe now? Why must we still call 911 every day as panhandlers, drug addicts, their dealers, and common criminals continue to haunt our neighborhoods? The police may sporadically patrol but still won't arrest, and the DA still won't prosecute these offenders in a consistent manner. Granted, the situation today is much better than it was a few years ago, but there's still a long way to go. The mentally ill, homeless, and drug addicted need treatment and protection in secure facilities. Plus, we also need a return to summary arrests and community court for common criminals. Residents and visitors alike want law and order, so let's do our jobs and fully enforce the law now. I want to also add that I think the time is long past for universal healthcare with a private option. I think that's what city council should also vote on a resolution to support. I think you would get a lot of support from Republicans, Democrats, independents, everyone for that. I have a daughter and, and other children who have had problems with getting healthcare. It's really an embarrassment, if not a crime, that this country still doesn't have universal healthcare with a private option. Thank you.
Good morning, beautiful people. My name is Wanda Walker, and I'm always going to come here and talk about generational wealth and how it's being stolen in Philadelphia. So, number one, I want to ask for moratorium because there's too many people losing properties. Number two, I want to make sure that everyone knows that November the 22nd, 9:00 AM in Room 453, you will see Mr. Ray Johnson fighting against the Act 135 Conservatory. And anyone who has lost a property from deed snatching, Act 135 and all the other different ways properties are being snatched should come to this hearing. Again, that's November the 22nd, 9:00 AM. Again, that's November the 22nd, 9:00 a.m., Room 453. My next thing that I want to mention is all the different ways properties are being attacked in Philadelphia. First of all, we just had an increase in property taxes, forty-eight percent. Many of us do not qualify for any type of program. You have to be poor, senior, or residential, longtime residential, to get any help. So that leaves businesses, middle-class people, open to have to pay these ridiculous increases. Are you all aware of how much property insurance has gone up? Property insurance has gone up over three hundred percent. So when you add that to the taxes along with the utilities, we cannot any longer afford the very properties that we worked for to have in our families for the last twenty, thirty, or forty years. This is generational wealth being stolen because our representatives unfortunately may not be aware or are aware of all the different ways that we are being attacked and we are not being protected. We saw a shift in the voting, and we need, and you all need to pay attention to that because people are really starting to vote differently. City council has seventeen people here. Fourteen of you all are Democrats, two are working family, one is a Republican. We can't blame the Republicans or the white people for what's going on in city council because the majority of you all are Democratic and black. We need you all to do your job and protect us and listen to us. Young lady asked about the arena. The reason why they're pushing it? Because we have union people who live outside of Philadelphia that need this more than we do. And until it satisfies us, we're the voters and we're the citizens. You all need to represent us first and consider them second. You all don't live in Philadelphia, we do. We have to deal with everything that gets built because then our taxes go up. I think pretty much that's it. Please, please start protecting us. Our properties are being snatched, our seniors, our business, small businesses can't afford to be in Philadelphia, and we, the only way to get your attention is to vote differently, and you're starting to see that, so it's going to continue until you all listen to us. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Obonahagans. And before I start, just want to publicly thank council president for setting up that meeting with your chief of staff. It was a great meeting with John Christmas, longtime friend. Good morning, council president, council members, citizens of Philadelphia. As we consider today's ordinance on nonconformities, it's clear that the real nonconformities is, is in this very chamber where certain members have chosen inaction over duty to the American freedman community. Philadelphia voters recently showed their impatience with ineffective leadership as Democrats got outsmarted by Donald J. Trump and the Republicans. And right here, some council members know that American freedmen's constitutional rights are being trampled under the Thirteenth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment, yet they sit back with indifference. Now, as one whose name, Hagens, carries the weight of freedman heritage, I can't ignore the irony of this compliance bill when certain members here won't comply with their very own vows. Dreadlocks, for instance, have long symbolized strength, resilience, and the radical commitment to justice, but to wear them without embodying the courage is mockery. If they've abandoned that spirit, they might as well cut their locks off. The Sankofa tradition, where we look back to move forward, reminds us that we must reclaim what was taken, but how can anyone work in a place named after this legacy yet refuse to inform young freedman students that affirmative action opportunities are still there? They deny the spirit of Sankofa and disrespect those who fought to give them those roles. And then there's the member who won't act unless there's a crowd. The leaders that don't wait for cheering sections are the leaders that freedmen expect. And look, let me just belabor the point. I wrote resignation letters for three council members, and I expect council president to sign them and that the council members will absolutely sign them and get out so we can have a special election. And there are three people here, one of them is not here, Isaiah Thomas, you need to resign, you're fired. Jeffrey Young, you need to resign, you're fired. And Anthony Phillips, you need to resign, you're fired. You're the one who told me I have to bring a crowd to you to deal with a constitutional violation. It was Jeffrey Young who told me that I have to, one second, just one second. He said that I, he said, "I know we're violating your Fourteenth Amendment equal protection rights, but you're going to have to sue me." Imagine a city council member telling his elder-
Mr. Hagens, Mr. Hagens, Obonahagans, with all due respect, just talk about your resolutions, sir.
Excuse me?
And just, can you just focus on-
I did, no, wait a minute. I did introduce it, I talked about what I wanted to talk about, and can you give these two-
We just asked that you just refrain from the following up on the members. Just have conversations with them as we follow up. Your time is up, sir. We'll just follow up, but thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Obonahagans. We've heard you. Thank you, sir.
Council president, there are no further needs for public-
This concludes today's public comment. We will now consider the bills and resolutions. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendars. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 241034?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1766 through 72 North Bodine Street, 2244 and 2246 Hope Street, 218 Cecil B. Moore Avenue located in the Seventh Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Lazada for motion regarding Resolution Number 241034.
Thank you, council president. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property seconded, the Resolution Number 241034 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240035?
A resolution calling on the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to establish an office of the public healthcare advocate within the office of the attorney general.
The chair recognizes minority leader Brooks for motion regarding Resolution Number 241035.
Thank you, council president. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property seconded, the Resolution Number 241035 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 2400004?
An ordinance amending Title 11 Streets and Title 21 Miscellaneous of the Philadelphia Code to amend requirements concerning publication of notices and newspapers, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now is, how the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye. Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lazada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240613?
An ordinance amending Chapter 12-1100 Miscellaneous Regulations and Penalties and Chapter 12-2800 Administrative Adjudication of Parking Regulations of the Philadelphia Code, making revisions to disability parking space standards and procedures, creating an application process for residential disability parking spaces limited for use by a specific person with a disability, creating a new administrative hearing process and amending applicable penalties.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 240613A. A copied amendment has been circulated to all members' accounts, so I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It has the moving property seconded, that the amendment to Bill Number 240613-A be adopted. All those in favor was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. The chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill to be recognized. Would you be like to be voted aye on the previous bill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that.
It shall be duly noted. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240931?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the changing of the name of Tawney Street to LaCount Street, from West Toronto Street to West Somerset Street, from Ridge Avenue to Cecil B. Moore Avenue, from Master Street to Aspen Street, from Pine Street to Bainbridge Street, from Catherine Street to Christian Street, from Dickinson Street to Morris Street, and authorizing and directing the changing of the name of Tawney Terrace from Point Breeze Avenue to Jackson Street to LaCount Terrace, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now is, how the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas, aye. Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lazada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
And Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. The clerk will please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar. We are now under the consideration of privileged resolutions.
A privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the Philadelphia Tribune, an advocate and trailblazer for the African-American community on the occasion of its 140-year anniversary as the oldest continuously published newspaper owned and operated by African-Americans, introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes majority leader Gilmore Richardson for motion on a resolution.
Thank you, council president. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has the moving property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Joint Committees on Public Safety and Parks and Recreation to hold hearings to examine the interdepartmental protocol administered by Philadelphia Parks and Recreation, the Philadelphia Fire Department, and the Office of Emergency Management for Urban Fire Management in public parks and park-adjacent neighborhoods, considering the recent unprecedented droughts and wildfires across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has the moving property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing November 17th, 2024, as World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for motion on a resolution.
Thank you, council president. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution declaring the third week of every November as Restorative Justice Week in the City of Philadelphia in honor of the International Campaign International Restorative Justice Week, introduced by Councilmember Lazada.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Lazada for motion on a resolution.
Thank you, council president. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the 300th anniversary of the Carpenter's Company of the City and County of Philadelphia, the nation's oldest trade guild, and the stewards of Carpenter's Hall, introduced by Councilmember Squilla.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
It has the moving property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
There are no other resolutions in my possession, council-
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? The chair recognizes minority leader Brooks.
Thank you, council president. Here in Philly and across the state, working families are barely holding it together. Savings are low, debt is high, and the cost of a trip to the hospital threatens to put many families over the edge. Meanwhile, insurance companies are wringing profit out of people, and they face no accountability for delaying, denying, or overcharging for life-threatening medical care. Today, we pass a resolution calling on the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to establish an office of public healthcare advocate within the office of an attorney general. The role of this advocate would be to help Pennsylvania stand up for their healthcare rights and stand up against big insurance companies that unfairly delay and deprive patients of healthcare coverage. This advocate would help recover millions of dollars for patients while holding insurance companies accountable and improving access to healthcare in Pennsylvania. If any of my colleagues would like to learn more about the public health advocate and how it could be beneficial to Philadelphians, my staff can direct you to report, to a report created by Nichme Durinko and her colleagues at Put People First. Thank you so much, council president.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the past few weeks now, we've spent hours discussing a potential Seventy Sixers arena, but I do think is, we, we should focus our energy on more immediately pressing issues like saving SEPTA from crashing out from its ongoing fiscal crisis. SEPTA has warned us for months now, for months, that without government support, it will face fare hikes and service cuts. I think I came into the Pew trainings before even being inaugurated, and this was something that was lifted up at that time. And, and here we are, as they have predicted. Without quick action, SEPTA plans to increase fares by twenty-nine percent above the already proposed hikes and to cut service by at least twenty percent starting in early 2025. These changes will significantly affect the roughly eight hundred thousand Philadelphians who rely on SEPTA, not just on Thursday mornings, Mr. Glassdine, but daily. First, fare increases will place a financial strain on many working residents, making it harder for lower-income Philadelphians to access jobs, to access education, to access essential services. Second, service cuts mean fewer buses and trains, leading to longer wait times than there already are, more crowded platforms than there already are, more packed vehicles than there already are. This will likely drive more people in cars, increase traffic, as if it hasn't been crazy enough already, as well as CO2 emissions, something that's really, really important, though we sometimes don't pay attention to that, and even pushing jobs out of the region. This will put SEPTA, as I think the quote was, into a death spiral. So, the resolution that is being introduced today by our team on behalf of the council president calls on our good governor, Josh Shapiro, and the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to take urgent action to flex federal highway transportation dollars to appropriate to local transit authorities. This is our- This is our last chance, the last one, to save SEPTA from its impending death spiral, and Governor Shapiro has the power to help us avoid this actual catastrophe. To date, Pennsylvania has only flexed two percent of this funding. Our neighbor across the river, New Jersey, has flexed fifteen percent. So, our ask here is that, once the resolution is passed, next week, our office will circulate a letter to all of council, encouraging others to sign on, pressuring our good governor to flex or reallocate these funding, this funding towards SEPTA. And this will allow SEPTA to free up its own capital funds for use in its ongoing budget, allowing them to avoid fare increases and service cuts. The resolution so far has been cosponsored by every single member of council and the offices that have made this a priority. I want to name for certainly the Chair of Transportation, Councilman Driscoll, Councilwoman Gautier, Minority Leader Brooks, Councilman Thomas, as well as Landau. Our governor knows the importance of SEPTA. He knows that it provides more than just transportation. It is a lifeline, it really is, for countless Philadelphians, connecting communities, connecting job, to jobs, to schools, to health care, which we've already talked about a lot, and so much more. So, it is critical that we band together to make this formal request for his action. Thank you, Mr. President, and my colleagues who have made this the priority that it is.
Thank you. Speech on behalf of the majority. Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I introduce legislation that addresses a significant issue impacting the Ninth District. It is the oversaturation of certain types of businesses, particularly nuisance convenience stores, smoke shops, auto repair shops, auto parts sellers, and event assembly halls. Now, here's the truth. When I speak to an individual about a legislation that they want to pass, I always say that I do not make decisions based off of what I want. I make decisions based off of what the majority of neighbors want in our district. That is democracy. So, in speaking with neighbors, we've heard clear concerns about how these businesses, when overly concentrated, disrupt quality of life. Just recently, on Castor Avenue in the Northeast, there are four smoke shops that have come up onto that avenue, causing disruption to the nature of that neighborhood. We want to create safety and cleanliness. We want it in these smoke shops detract from the character and appeal of our neighborhoods. Street mechanics, vacant event facilities, nuisance convenience stores, and smoke shops have all contributed to these problems. We want to emphasize that since the beginning of the pandemic, there's been influx of convenience stores and openings and serving as a hotspot for criminal activity. These establishments contribute to a range of serious issues, including loitering, excessive trash, noise disturbances from idling cars with loud music, open-air drug transactions in use, sidewalk instructions by parked cars, and public disservices such as drunkenness and public urination. I'm excited to continue the work of our previous Councilmember Sherrell Parker in addressing these issues. The Ninth District Overlay Ordinance Amendment introduces special exceptions requiring these business types to undergo the RCO, requiring the community's input. This will allow us to better manage where and how these businesses operate, reducing their density and mitigating negative impacts on our neighborhood. Our goal is to foster a balanced mix of businesses that meet community needs, enhance our commercial corridors, and support neighborhood quality of life. Businesses and our neighbors are in support of this legislation, and by managing these high-impact businesses, we are taking a proactive step to creating a safer, cleaner, and more vibrant city of Philadelphia, and particularly a Ninth District. So, we're looking forward to receiving RCO input before businesses of this type and nature come into our community. Thank you, Council President, for giving me the floor.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I proudly cosponsored the resolution Minority Whip Nicholas O'Rourke, introduced on Council President's behalf, calling on Governor Shapiro and DVRPC to flex federal infrastructure funds from state highway projects to SEPTA. I cannot overstate how alarmed I am by SEPTA's intention to increase fares by thirty percent and cut service across the board by twenty percent. The transit agency will also be forced to eliminate dozens of routes and provide such infrequent and unreliable service on weekends that it will be, quote, unusable. These measures mark the beginning of a public transportation death spiral that will be nearly impossible to reverse, so I shudder to think about the catastrophic damage that will be done if these measures go into effect in January. West and southwest Philadelphians disproportionately depend on public transportation to get to work, school, health care, and other essentials. For us, taking SEPTA isn't an option, it's a necessity. That's why safe, reliable, and affordable public transportation is fundamental to the economic success of both my constituents and our entire Commonwealth. One of the things that makes Philly special is that you do not need a car to travel our great city. And with President-elect Trump and other climate deniers taking control of the White House, it is on us to make sure we are protecting our planet. But letting SEPTA implode will only increase our reliance on fossil fuels. Let me be clear, Republicans in Harrisburg are solely responsible for this predictable but avoidable scenario. The state House passed funding for SEPTA with bipartisan support, but the state Senate left Harrisburg for the year yesterday without holding a vote. So, now it is up to Governor Shapiro and DVRPC to, quote, "get stuff done." When the governor says that, he doesn't use the word "stuff," but I'm calling on them to get stuff done and protect the economic success and mobility of our city by flexing federal infrastructure funding to public transit. During a similar crisis in two thousand and five, then-Governor Ed Rendell flexed money to avert transit cuts, and in two thousand and ten, he used the threat of flexing funding to prod the General Assembly into passing a ten-year transit funding bill. SEPTA has been ringing the alarm for two years now, and frankly, Harrisburg ran out the clock. It is one minute to midnight, and we need the governor and DVRPC to do what needs to be done. Thank you, Council President Johnson and Councilmember O'Rourke, for your leadership on this issue. I'm very proud to stand with you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Lasada.
Thank you, Council President. November is recognized internationally as Restorative Justice Month, and today, I put forth a resolution that will decree the third Tuesday in November as Justice Day in the City of Philadelphia. Restorative justice is a key component to our city's criminal justice system. We must provide returning citizens with a clear path forward and strong tools to help them rebuild their lives. We have three amazing people who are with us here today, who are leaders in restorative justice. I want to recognize each of them while they are here with us. Carmen Pagan, a single mother of five, who served a five-year sentence at Muncie State Prison and has since excelled both personally and professionally, earning her bachelor's degree in criminal justice and becoming the first in her family to graduate college. She's committed to community impact. She works as a mentor to those seeking to overcome recidivism, advocates for underserved populations, and provides case management services, all while pursuing further education and empowering others with her lived experience. Luis Soto, an assistant program manager with the Police-Assisted Diversion Program, who before being in this position was on the other side of the law. He served a combined twelve years in state and county prisons. Today, he uses that lived experience to help turn people's lives around, intervening to put them on a better path. Raquel Fretzer, a certified recovery specialist, community advocate, who has dedicated her life to expanding access to behavioral health resources in Philadelphia, drawing on her personal recovery journey that began in two thousand and sixteen. With over eight years of sobriety, she actively reduces stigma around substance use and mental health challenges while serving in leadership roles, including as co-chair of the Mental Health Planning Council and pursuing a degree in psychology. Thank you all for being here today and for your work in our communities. Fifth, along with Councilmember Nico Vorick and Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, will be observing Justice Day with a two-pronged event, a listening session where returning citizens will have the chance to share their stories and opinions directly with lawmakers and advocate for the changes they want to see in the justice system, and a resource fair, which will include record expungence and reviews, employment opportunities, networking opportunities, and housing resources. This event is designed to provide both a platform and advocacy and access to critical services that support successful reintegration. I'd like to thank both of my colleagues for their partnership. Finally, due to unforeseen circumstances, the scheduled DBHIDS briefing following the slated meeting has unfortunately been canceled. We recognize the importance of this briefing and the valuable insight they provide. We are in the process of coordinating with the relevant parties to reschedule this important session at the earliest possible convenience. We will ensure that you are notified promptly with the new details once they are available. I apologize for any inconvenience that this causes. I'd also like to say thank you to each of you who contributed to my birthday day of action. I think that it was extremely successful, and I look forward to working with some of you to figure out who all of the supplies will go to. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, just wanted to commend Councilwoman Lasada on her Restorative Justice Day bill. And to those who testified here today, I just want to say that I am proud of you. I am proud of you because you took the initiative to change. The past is the past. I guess, I guess I should actually start off how we in recovery start off. I am Jim Harity, and I am an addict. So, I know firsthand the struggles that you faced. I know firsthand how easy it is to give up, especially when so many things are working against you. I am proud of you. I am proud of the work you are doing. I am proud that you took control of your life and said, "I don't have to live like this. I can be something else. I can be that solution that you talk about." You know, we remind ourselves in recovery every day that, which I just said, is the fact that I'm a grateful recovering addict. And I say, "recovery." I am not recovered. Every day is a journey. But through time, I've learned that the past is something that we can't control. The past is just that. It was the past. The future, we don't know what's in store. That's why we always say we have today, one day, just today. I don't have to worry about anything else. But I just wanted to make sure that you knew that somebody is here that understands, and that's what this body is about. And I'm proud of this body. You know, we get a lot of slack for a lot of different things, but the bottom line is, this body that I serve with, they care. They care about the citizens of Philadelphia, all the citizens of Philadelphia, whether you're struggling, whether you got it together, or whether you're trying to get it together. So, I just commend you all and thank you again for sharing your story, because we shouldn't forget, but we don't have to live in that past. Thank you.
Councilmember Young.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Harity, for sharing that, you know, that addiction does not discriminate. So, we all know someone, have someone, love someone who's struggling with that. So, thank you, Councilmember Harity. And just want to start off by saying, the people are well aware of how to cause me to resign, so I don't feel like, I don't see me resigning today, Mr. President. There's a mechanism to get me to resign. I think the voters know how to do that. But today, I want to thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilmember Jones for passing legislation to rename Taney Street to LaCount Street. It's something personal to me because I grew up on a Taney Street, on the seventeen-hundred block of Taney Street where my father lived. And, you know, to have this come to fruition, to always see now that, you know, the residents in North Philadelphia and South Philadelphia can have someone to research and look up and say, "Who is LaCount?" And when they look her up and they see who she is, to see the things that she did for our communities, that's someone they can be proud of to say they have a street named after. So, I want to thank you and Councilman Jones for your support with that legislation. I want to thank our partners. Today, I introduced a resolution thanking the Commonwealth for passing legislation that will help aid our law enforcement in fighting these illegal street races that happen in our city. So, just to give the public some, I guess, a synopsis of what this bill does that was passed by our state. It expands the scope of illegal racing to include traffic ways, to include regular streets that was only for highways. Now, they've included our streets. They have a specific definition for drifting that was not something that was in our state code previously. So, now that is defined, they've increased the fine for a first-street racing violation from two hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. They've also increased the fine for a subsequent violation from two hundred thousand, excuse me, to one thousand dollars. They provided for a mechanism to impound your vehicle for six months. They've also provided that an organizer of a street race event shall be fined for a thousand dollars for each vehicle involved. And so, you know, I want to thank again our state partners for recognizing the issues that we face here in Philadelphia and doing something about it. I want to thank my constituents in the Fifth District who've called my office day in and day out to complain about this issue, to talk to us about how we can cure this particular issue that's going on in our city. Because we all know that, from the arrests that the police have made, these folks aren't from our city. They're from outside our city, terrorizing our communities. I want to thank again our state partners for recognizing that and helping us fight that issue, one of many issues that affect the quality of life here in the city of Philadelphia. And last but not least, those who are listening, my office is sponsoring another one of the tax workshops tonight. If you have experienced an increase in your real estate tax assessment, you know, there is a program out there for you. Tonight, we will be in the Burytown section of North Philadelphia. We will be at twenty-eight-hundred West Thompson Street at Celestial Ward Ministries for our property tax relief workshops. Again, get information on how to peel your assessment, information on homeset exemption, all the programs that are available to you. And just note that you have until November eighteenth, I believe that is what, Monday, to file your first level of review for your appeals. And we want to make sure that every Philadelphian who is agreed by this, if you feel your tax, property tax bill has gone up too high, please file an appeal of your property taxes. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilmember Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President. Today, my colleagues and I recognize November seventeenth as World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims in the City of Philadelphia. In Philadelphia, traffic crashes are a public health crisis. Traffic deaths are a leading cause of preventable deaths, disproportionately harming people who are walking and biking, and in particular, people of color and people in low-income communities. In twenty-
people of color and people in low-income communities. In 2023, 123 people in Philadelphia died in vehicular crashes. Thank you to the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia, Families for Safe Streets Greater Philadelphia, and other coalition partners who will continue to memorialize lives lost to traffic violence through their advocacy demanding safer streets for all. Three shout-outs as well. I want to thank you and Councilmember O'Rourke for your incredible bill to, resolution to call on the state, Governor Josh Shapiro, to flex federal infrastructure funds from state highway projects to stave off fare increases in SEPTA. Shout-out to Councilmember Gaultier for that fire speech today. She hit it, she nailed it. This is absolutely preventable. We need to invest in SEPTA, invest in public transportation, not take money away, which will, the fare increases will cause fewer people to ride. Also wanted to give a shout-out to you and Councilmember Jimmy Harity for your importance, for your bill amending the prevailing wage to add stadium concessions employees. Big shout-out to our friends at Unite Here. We support you. We stand with you. Thank you for being here. Got to make sure we're taking care of the workers. And finally, to my colleague, the birthday week, Councilmember Ketsi Lazada, for your Restorative Justice Bill. It's such an essential tool in making sure we are healing our communities. And to the brave individuals who spoke about their recovery and transformation today, including my colleague, thank you so very much. It is so hard to tell your stories in public. We appreciate you. We stand with you. We support you. And anything you need, you got all the council standing with you. Thank you.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilman Harity, for continuing to share your story. We know it's a struggle, and I think you're an example of life after addiction. And I know it's daily, there's not really an after addiction, but, you know, you're showing the folks that it can be done. So, thank you for that. And Councilwoman Gaultier and Councilman O'Rourke, your efforts on behalf of SEPTA are critical. We hope they're being heard. We'll continue this fight. And in that spirit, I want to remind all members that today at 3:00 PM, we are having a briefing by SEPTA in the caucus room. So, I encourage all members to attend. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass for a motion. Well, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 21st, 2024 at 10:00 AM.
It has been moved in property second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 21st, 2024 at 10:00 AM. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you all very much.